Good afternoon. It is now 3:15 PM. I'd like to call the Transportation Improvement Work Session to order. Adam Clark, can you take please?
Brenham.
Here.
Pugh. McBride. Livingston.
Here.
Taratio.
Here.
Walker.
Here.
Baron. Weaver.
Here.
Mackey.
Here.
English.
Present.
Newton.
Here.
We have Aquorum.
Thank you. We have two items for discussion this afternoon related to the report of the Transportation Ad Hoc Committee and then revenue considerations. As a reminder to all colleagues, this work session is the second in a series of work sessions that this body approved in our transportation penny roadmap schedule. And so we are on schedule in what we put out as we review and consider revenue related to the new penny and what that will look like in the upcoming possible ordinance. Administrator Brown, is there anything from staff that you would like to say before we begin?
The only initial remarks, we just appreciate so many members being, making themselves available as much as they possibly can. I think it's going to help us navigate this process in a more efficient way.
Thank you so much Administrator Brown. I completely agree. So this afternoon, we have Mr. Ray Jones. Mr. Jones will be covering items 2A and B. Is that correct?
And Ms. Thomas.
Great. And ACA Thomas. You have the floor, Mr. Jones.
Thank you very much. I'm just pulling up the PowerPoint. I think each of the, all the members, all of them.
I don't think your mic's on.
Yes, it is.
Is it? He seemed love.
There it is. How about that?
There we go.
Okay. I think all of you have a hard copy of what we're getting ready to go through. So Madam Chair, if I may, I want to step through the PowerPoint and leave us a lot of time to talk about revenues and talk about costs and some of the work that's been done. But if we can, and just turning to the first slide, kind of looking at an agenda of sorts, we're going to just quickly review the roadmap. As you pointed out, that's been our guiding document this entire process. I'm going to provide counsel with a little bit of an update for those that didn't hear it in the Transportation Ad Hoc Committee meeting, a little bit of an update regarding the activities of the T-PAC and what's been happening since our last work session. Similarly, the activities of the Comet and its board as they've been working with us. Then we'll talk about funding and costs. We're going to answer a couple of questions regarding the principles that are to be applied to help us sort through these penny projects. And finally, we'll discuss the projects and some of the categories that have been on the table, but just by way of review and getting us pointed in the direction of second reading, which is now scheduled for May 14th. If we could go, please, to the next slide, which is the roadmap. Many of you all have seen this multiple times. I'm sure you have it taped up on your refrigerators at home. So we have done everything that's in the gray boxes. So we have accomplished quite a bit during the latter stages of March and April. And here we are in the second row of boxes. Y'all may note that we have 14 some odd additional meetings and things to do associated with the approval of the penny ordinance. And of course, lots to do if that should occur between the time that the penny ordinance is approved in July and then ultimately when the referendum is held in November. But if we can go ahead and now turn the page, I want to remind counsel, if we can, go one more, too, if you don't mind. I want to remind counsel about the resolution it adopted where it charged the Transportation Penny Advisory Committee with helping in this process and specifically directed the Transportation Advisory Committee there in Section 1 to review and advise, to review the plans and advise the county on the transportation needs assessment, which you all have heard about in the past from STANTEC, the projects necessary to address those needs, the principles to be applied to determine and execute the projects, and the categorization of the projects for purposes of the referendum ballot for the proposed sales and use tax. And we have also asked that the T-PAC conclude its work by June 17th, 2024. I'm pleased to report that they are on track. And if we can now just go to the next slide, I wanted to show you what we call the funnel. This really represents, in many respects, the work that the T-PAC and the Transportation Ad Hoc Committee are both undertaking right now. They are taking what is a very long list of needs that you all have already seen. They are looking to boil those needs down through the application of principles to actionable projects that will ultimately land in one of three categories that we have outlined in the ordinance. Y'all know these well, but they are the community investment category, the county advancement category, and the Comet enhancement category. If we can now go to the next page. So when we started this process, we had some empty seats on the T-PAC, which have been filled. They have met three times in the last six weeks in order to begin to address the T-PAC charge. They've met on May 18th, April 1st, and April 15th. We have two new members from the City of Columbia, one new member from the town of Eastover, one from the town of Urmo, and one new member from the town of Arcadia Lakes. And if I'm not mistaken, I believe that brings us to full capacity. The T-PAC is now meeting here. So to the extent you note a T-PAC meeting on the roadmap, if you want to attend, they're meeting in the fourth floor conference room, and I think that's the plan for the foreseeable future. Mr. Livingston is ably acting as the liaison from council to T-PAC. And his input at the meetings in terms of sharing the thoughts that council has had on this process, I think, has been invaluable. And the transportation, or T-PAC, has provided some information that we shared with the Transportation Ad Hoc Committee earlier today. So they've done a lot of work. We're very appreciative of their partnership. Next, if we could just talk briefly about the Comet, and we'll flip on over to the next slide, please, just on the Comet update. So Maurice Pearl, who is the new director of the Comet, has been present at our T-PAC meetings. He was there on April 1 and asked that we bring some of the same information forward to his board at their April 10th meeting, which we did. And as a result of that, I think we've gotten, have been able to have some further conversations and understand that they are now focused on coming back to the county with a more specific project request and ask of the county in terms of its, if its needs from the penny. We understand they're meeting tomorrow. Don't know if the recommendation will come from tomorrow's meeting or whether it'll come later, but we do know that's in process and been good communication with the Comet. If we can now go two more slides, we're going to start getting into funding and costs. I'm going to be the setup man here as I invite Ms. Thomas to come up and simply share with you all that what you're getting ready to see in terms of these slides is hours and hours of work that Ms. Thomas and her staff in the county's financial advisory firm have put in to give the council accurate projections on what the penny may generate. And you'll see why that's important as we start talking about costs. So without further ado, let me just cede the mic to Ms. Thomas.
Thanks, Ray. Madam Chair, if I may be recognized?
Yes, ACA Thomas, I just want to make sure before we move into this, did anyone have any questions about this first overview section? Yes, ma'am, you may.
Thank you very much. So when we began down this path, we actually worked with First Tryon Partners, who are our financial advisors, to develop a model for projecting what, how much, and when we would be able to reach our collections goals. In doing so, what you see before you currently is a layout that has some specific year marks in it, and I'll sort of share how these were chosen. If you recall, as we began talking about our ordinance, there were three particular year marks that we talked about. One was 15, one was 20, one was 25. Looking at that, I thought that counsel may be interested in some other options. And of course, we can, we can look at any number that you would like to from that 15-year to that 25-year mark. But one was 19 years, just because it was just at that $3 billion mark of generation. And one was 22 years, because that's the number of years from our original penny that will expire once we hit our collections threshold. We've built our projections based on a collection increase rate of 3% annually. The current penny has escalated at 4.67%. However, if you recall, we began collecting this, this actually was taken into action in 2012, and we've really not seen any sort of disruption in the economy in that entire time. But we think that using a higher rate might be a bit, a bit uncautious, or not as cautious as we would like, as we would like to do. So we believe that this is a more conservative effort. So what you're seeing there is your annual projected, projected collections in the column there with the numbers in it for each of those years, starting in 2027, which is when we believe that we would begin to collect. If for some reason we would hit, the penny is approved and we would hit that collection threshold sooner, we could immediately begin collecting. So that could shift at any given time. But the collection amounts over a 12-month period should be very consistent. With that, in the 15-year column down at 2041, you would see that collections are estimated to be $2.212 million. At 19 years, it would be $2.988 million. At 20 years, it's $3.197 million. At 22, $3.633 billion. And at 2025, $4.337 billion. And I'll stop there if anyone has any questions. Go to the next slide. The next slide here actually goes into the dividing the pots of month, the amount available of available funds into the appropriate categories that council has undertaken, one being community investment projects, one being county advancement projects, and one being the Comet enhancement projects. The projected collections there also follow the template of our current ordinance at 40%, 40%, 20%, and at each of the given year markers. You can see your total collections for each one of those marks ties back to the chart on the previous slide, and each one of the individual amounts below that breaks that total amount of money down. The blue is an indicator of the community investment projects. The orange is the county advancement projects. The gray is the Comet projects. Now, I will say to you again and just remind you that those numbers could change. This is just the assumptions based on the current proposed ordinance text and are subject to change at the will of the council.
Councilman Weaver, you recognized?
Thomas, I just, I just want to clarify. On the previous page, when you said 2.2, you meant billion, right?
Billion, correct.
Billion with a B.
Billion with a B.
Okay. I just want to make sure I heard that right.
Keep in mind that our current project list is $2.391 billion.
Thank you.
Sure.
And I do want to say to make sure we're talking the same thing, because when we, ACA Thomas, you say project list, we're really talking about things that are included in the transportation needs assessment.
Correct. Just the needs assessment.
Yes, we have not talked about a project.
Right. The needs assessment. Sorry. Thank you. Anette. Are there any questions further to this slide? We can go on to the next. So we also need to talk about inflation a little bit. Inflation is based on, the needs assessment list currently is based on today's dollars. What you see below there are the projected inflation costs at 3% for those same projects over 15, 20, and 25 years. So a good, for instance, at 3% for 2025, we will collect in 2025, if you choose to go 25 years, $4.337 billion. At a 3% inflation rate for the needs assessment list, which is currently $2.391 billion, the projected cost at a 3% inflation rate would be $3.486 billion. If it were to go to a 5% inflation rate, it would be $4.564 billion. And at 7%, $6.049 billion.
ACA Thomas, or Madam Clark, just so you know, this page is very blurry. So I'm listening, but it's also, we probably want to get an updated one cent where the numbers are clear.
We will.
Councilwoman Newton, you recognized?
Yes. And first, thank you for saying that, Chairwoman Mackey, because I thought I needed to go straight to the optometrist, because I could not read that. So Ms. ACA Thomas, if you could answer my question with certainty, you could be the Fed Chair. So with that as a disclaimer, what is our, is Tryon advising that one of these projected inflation rates might be the most prudent? Or what if, I appreciate seeing the three options. We don't have crystal balls, but if one wanted to be, you know, conservative, but not, you know, the sky is falling, is there one of these numbers that was recommended for us?
The actual inflation numbers were done, were projected for us by STANTEC.
Okay.
And they're economically linear.
Okay.
So it's just an extrapolation formula. We have not asked First Tryon for that information. I can ask First Tryon for that information. However, they did feel prudent to use 3% as a growth rate for our current income or revenue that would be projected. But I will be happy to ask that question.
Well, first, and let me be clear. I mean, I'm not sure who the right person to ask. When I saw this, I, I just made an incorrect assumption that this number had come from First Tryon, because I know that many of the numbers have. So, but speaking to what you just said, the 3% that you're referring to was what they thought we should take into account for revenue growth. That was not a projected inflation number from them.
That is correct.
Okay. Who would be the best, I mean, again, it's crystal balls, but what, what would be the best source of information to kind of say which of these three numbers, as we look at inflation, we might want to take? And I think it's really important, because inflation is one of the challenges that we really ran into with the current penny, where you're looking at projects that were scoped from an inflation perspective and pricing perspective eons ago.
I will talk to First Tryon and ask their advice, if that's okay with counsel, and provide you some feedback on that. However, I will say that it is a crystal ball. It will be a best projection. It will be a best estimate, because none of us actually ever expected that we would hit 8% inflation either, over a given period of time. But I'll be happy to get that information and get it back to you. The other thing to consider on this is that while, let's take the 7% worst-case scenario at 25 years of $6.049 million or billion dollars cost of our needs assessment list, during that course of time, that's taking 100% of your needs assessment list and saying that that would be what that would cost. So having it reach actually $6.49 billion is probably unlikely, because you will be doing projects along.
Thank you. Any other questions on assumed inflation numbers? Okay, ACA.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll turn it back over to Mr. Jones.
Thank you for that. I think what we see in the numbers is a likelihood that we'll have to make judgment calls on, on the needs list. In other words, it's very unlikely that we're going to have sufficient collections to do everything on the needs list at an inflated number and provide, you know, funding to the Comet. And so that's the one thing we, I guess we wanted to make sure we illustrated for counsel, that there'll be, there'll need to be decisions made, which brings us to this whole principles concept. And so for those of you who were with.
Mr. Jones? I'm sorry to interrupt you. Can I just say a few things before we change topics, just as related to just the numbers financially? So just as a reminder, everyone, this work session is really for us to make sure that we're looking at the revenue projections and that we all have an understanding of where it is, that things will be at a 15-year, a 20-year, or 25, in the collections amount because of our ordinance and where we stay in our schedule for second reading. So as you remember, in our first reading, we had placeholders in there. We talked about our three categories that we've agreed upon, and we have a 40% for community investment, a 40% for county advancement, 20% for Comet. Well, then there's two other placeholders that are in our ordinance that states we need to set a year and a collections amount. And so as we approach our second reading, that is a number that, as a body, and we cannot take action today, but as a body, we need to be in agreeance upon so that we can update this ordinance, so that the public is fully aware of what our intentions are as we move forward with the ordinance. So I really want to make sure that everyone has had the time to understand the numbers. If there are additional questions, thank you, Ms. Newton, for raising your issue. If there are additional questions, concerns, or if we need to dive in a little bit more about what, you know, a 15-year, 20-year, 25-year means, now is the time to do that, because at our next meeting, it will be then the time to put it in the ordinance. So this is the time now to have the conversations related to the numbers. Councilman Weaver, you recognized?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just so I'm, just so I'm clear, when you say now is the time to talk about the numbers, are you talking about the number of years specifically? Okay. Because I thought we had already kind of said 15 years, but that's still up for debate?
We did not, sir.
We did not? Okay.
No, sir, we did not.
Okay. That's just a proposal.
That is just proposed, because at that time, we did not have numbers.
Okay.
And so that's, that's what I'm saying. So now, everyone, we have the numbers. We can look at it and see what do we get with 15-year, what do we get with a 20-year collection? And we already know what our transportation needs assessment report says. And so we need to look at those, compare, and say, okay, here's where we're going to move forward with our proposed penny.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair.
Okay, I heard Attorney Wright. Okay.
You're right. Because in the ordinance, things that, there are placeholders there, but things that you will have to decide is, one, the actual percentages. Like, right now, it says 40, 40, 20. That's, that's just there, because they're just putting numbers there. You have to decide what the actual percentage is for each one of those categories is. The other thing is the term of years, whether 15, 20, 25, any, anything between 15 and 25. So that's, that's what counsel will have to decide as well. And the other thing is the total amount that you want, the cap, basically, of collections. So that, those three things you have to determine as counsel.
Hold on. ACA Thomas, did you have anything related to that before Councilman Weaver goes again?
I was just going to offer, Madam Chair, if you all have an interest and you want to dive into the numbers that were associated with the chart, I do have it virtually here so that if you have questions about what a certain change would look like, I can provide that, and we can walk through those as well.
Councilwoman Weaver?
The question on the 15, 20, 25, is 10 years off the table for some reason? I thought 10 years was still an option.
I don't know where that option came from.
But, but is that still an option for 10 years?
You're saying you would like them to look at a 10-year collections amount?
I just didn't know if that was still an option, or...
Yeah. Well, the max is 25.
Yeah.
Okay. But there's no minimum. I mean, it could be five years theoretically.
Yeah, but do you want to go through this process?
No, no, no. Granted, I'm just saying, there's no minimum, there's just a maximum. Am I saying that correctly?
That's correct.
I think that's correct, yes.
Okay. That's all I need. Thank you.
And I will say, I think when we have been discussing this, I think we've looked towards the, I guess, larger number of years because of the cost of projects and collections. I mean, you start off, if you're looking at a five-year collection, by the time you split that up with the Comet, how many projects are we actually getting done for the county? And so I, I think you have to be realistic and give us an amount of collection time that actually allows us to make sure we get projects done, more than just sidewalks, across the entire county. And that's really hard to accomplish and fund the Comet at five years. I saw Councilwoman Taratio, Councilwoman, Councilman Brenham, Councilwoman Newton.
Thank you. Just want to speak, I guess, as current chair of the Comet, and just remind everybody that we will be meeting tomorrow as a board, and we'll send back numbers. So I'm glad that we're having these numbers given to us today, because that will help inform our meeting tomorrow.
Thank you. Councilwoman Brenham.
With the current penny, this structure is X number of years or X number of dollars, whichever comes first, right?
That is correct, and that would be the same for this.
Okay. So I just want to be clear on that. That's the proposal, same structure?
Correct. The ordinance requires you list both. Yes. So you have to commit to a dollar amount and a year, whichever comes first.
Okay. Thanks.
You're welcome. I'm sorry, Mr. Jones. I know you're the legal expert. I didn't want to overstep there. Councilwoman Newton?
Thank you. So first, just always keeping in mind the things that were, are coming back before us, Mr. Wright, I just want to repeat and make sure I'm tracking the three things that we're going to have to make decisions on when we are in an action-making mode. Confirming the number of years for the penny, the percentage that will go into each bucket, and then the maximum cap for collections. Those are the three undetermined's.
Correct.
Thank you. And then, I'm not sure who the, the right person is to answer this question, but as we look at numbers, sorry, as we look at the number of years for the penny, there are considerations that, you know, Ms. Mackey just enumerated some of them. We're going to be splitting funds with the Comet. We're looking at projects countywide. Also, quite frankly, it takes time to do projects, team them up. There are so many different considerations. And so with that in mind, just if you could remind me, maybe for information, what kind of the average is, because we're no longer the only penny in South Carolina, and then from a, from a transportation perspective, you know, or whatever perspective, if there are any thoughts on what number might make us the most agile as we look at the fact that we're growing county, our needs are changing, and how we handle that process?
So I'll, I'll take that. Maybe let's start with the last question about agility. You know, many of you have been involved in these penny discussions for over a year, thinking about this process. We talked about it last summer. We talked about it last fall. And so it takes an inordinate amount of time and resources to get ready to put a penny on the ballot. And so the, the reason, I think, that counties tend to go longer with a transportation penny is because it allows you to address transportation needs with a source of funds that you can count on. It is predictable, the collections that come in from a transportation penny. When that source of funds goes away, you lose agility, because you don't have the ability to know that we've got a certain source of funds and/or bonds that have been approved in accordance with those funds to take care of needs. And so the longer the penny, I think arguably, the more agile the county would be. Because remember, and we'll talk about this in just a minute, this is a nice segue when we get to the principles conversation, that the way the county approaches this penny will always be dynamic. In other words, we have a list of needs. We expect that list of needs will be reviewed very regularly during the course of the penny, however long it is, and that the nature of the principles will enable counsel and staff to work through needs as they exist at the time decisions are made, whether they're needs known today or needs that may emerge later, so that you're able to be agile and deal with things that we don't know about today. So having said that, is there an average? When you look at the transportation penny counties, the four or five of them, the reason they choose the transportation penny is they want a longer penny than what you can get with the capital project sales tax penny. Capital project sales tax, as you all know, max of eight years. The transportation penny, max of 25. The penny terms we see for new pennies run anywhere from 15 to 25 years. I wouldn't say there's, there's assurance that one is better than the other. We began with 15 years simply because it was a place to begin. So we didn't intend to, to rule out 10 years, didn't intend to rule out 20. We began there for conversation purposes. And I think the numbers are starting to lead us to some answers. And it really comes down to, as a matter of... And it really comes down to, as a matter of policy, how much do we want to address on the transportation needs list? And how much of the comment-related projects and operational costs that need to be covered do we want to cover with this penny? And so, I think those are the types of questions that, that, that are staring at you, and I recognize they're weighty questions. But at the end of the day, whether it's a two-billion-dollar penny, or a three-billion-dollar penny, or a four-billion-dollar penny, there's still going to have to be choices made about which projects are done and which are, will have to be de-prioritized. Does that help?
Thank you.
Any other, uh, thoughts or, or questions related to, um, the years, collections?
Madam Chair.
The breakdowns of percentages? Yes, sir?
I, I did want to just amplify what ACA Thomas said. She's got the spreadsheets where she could literally show you what ten years collects, if folks are interested in knowing, or five years, or twenty, or, or something in between. So, that, we have that capability here tonight, if that's something folks want to see.
Any other questions? Or any other additional information that folks need that is not included in this packet that would help them in making future decisions related to the three decisions that we need to make? Councilwoman Barron, you're recognized.
Thank you. And, and I apologize if this question was covered, um, prior to my coming in, but these, these numbers that we have, how did we come up with these numbers?
Which page are you on?
I'm on the assumed, um, the project cost with assumed inflation.
Oh, you're on the inflation page?
Yeah.
Okay. ACA Thomas, can you walk through the, um, inflation stuff again? And there was a, a piece too that Ms. Newton asked related to that, so there's going to be more information coming back. But ACA Thomas, if you could, uh, go through that again and kind of explain where it came from?
Certainly. So, these numbers came from StanTech, and it's based on a linear factor of cost escalated at a certain percentage every year based on projected collections, uh, or, or based on projected, uh, project cost. So, in other words, if I were at fifteen years at three percent, that would assume that the value of the, of our needs assessment list right now, which is two-point-three-nine percent, goes up every year at a factor of three percent. So, three, one point, you know, a, a flat hundred dollars, and the next year, it goes up to a hundred and three dollars, and the next year, a hundred and three times, um, one-point-oh-three percent, a hundred and three percent. Okay? Same thing for five percent, same thing for seven percent.
And, and I'll say to, um, you know, Ms., I'll say to Ms. Barron, the information that ACA Thomas is using as well as our transportation needs assessment, and as we move into this next section with the project principles, there's still this conversation to be had that it doesn't mean that everything listed in that needs assessment is what will move forward, right? And so, but they're using that as the basis to give us these numbers. So, it, it could be that as we move forward with developing our categories and our project principles priorities, we all talked about the growth that's happening and being able to leave flexibility that we can address projects that come. So that's not in needs assessment, right? That, that means we're not going to address everything right now, but they're using that max list to kind of play this out. So, it is still, um, not final per se, right? Because we do need to look at the project principal piece, but this is the piece that gives us kind of where to start from so they can at least show, uh, numbers as related to inflation.
Well, that's helpful. That, that's, that's very helpful. And so with that, this, um, for instance, um, I'll just say the three percent at fifteen years, uh, I don't know if that's two-point-nine or two-point-six, what, whatever that number is, um, that number, we, we, we came up with that number based on the projects or the cost of the projects that are in the needs assessment.
Yes.
That's correct.
Okay, I'm good now.
Yeah. Madam Chair.
Okay. Attorney Wright?
Yeah, I just want to make sure everybody understands too that, that two-point-three-nine-one or two-point-four number does not include the comment at all. So that number is just the needs without the comment at all.
Councilwoman, uh, recognized?
One thing we did the last time with the penny to kind of head off and help with some of the inflation factors that we're worried about now was, was the fact that we agreed to fund some of the funding, and I think that was even stated in the referendum. Is that something that we need to state in the referendum this time if we want to do it so we can get projects done before ten years out and save on inflation costs?
Yes, you're recognized, Mr. Jones.
So, um, Mr. Livingston, right now, um, I probably should have thrown in while we were going through our list of three things that we've got to deal with in the ordinance, there, there, there is a fourth, and the fourth is, there is a placeholder there for approval of bonds as well. So you may, may recall, and just for those who have not yet been through a penny, you normally have two questions on the ballot. The first question is for the approval of the penny itself. The second question is for the approval of bonds to be issued to be repaid from the proceeds of the penny in order to jumpstart the projects. And so, we have a not-to-exceed TBD amount right now in the ordinance. And so that's a conversation that we'll also have to have over these next several weeks about how much worth of bonds do we want to put on the referendum? And I think by comparison, when the two-point-two, uh, I'm sorry, when the one-point-oh-seven-oh billion-dollar penny was put on the last ballot, I believe the amount approved was four-hundred-and-fifty million dollars with the bonds. So if you're just looking for a relationship between the two.
On, I see that somewhere.
Yeah, but you're right. I mean, if you're not, if you don't, th- there's two options with the penny program. It's pay-as-you-go, which is literally collect, spend, collect, spend, and, and you deal with, and, and, and one of the big challenges, I think, we had when we were looking at bond deals in the last penny was, how fast can we spend the penny dollars? And, and I think that'll be a consideration in this penny too. So in other words, whether you issue bonds or whether you're doing pay, pay-as-you-go, do you get the benefit of it? And so that's, those are, those are questions that need to be answered.
Madam Chair? If I may add something to that? If I may add something to that, there's also a break-even point on that, and we'll be able to present that with First Tryon. We've worked through that. We didn't want to talk, we wanted to keep this strictly to what we believe would be collected in the years this, during this conversation. During our next conversation, we can certainly talk about bonding, uh, and there is a certain point where you, you have to weigh the, the cost of inflation versus the cost of borrowing, and you have to find that, the sweet spot, if you will, in those two.
Uh, Councilman Branham, and then Newton.
Well, pretty quick things, I think. Um, the, the needs assessment that we're referring to, it includes the three-hundred-million-dollar project for Assembly Street and the, and the railroad intersections, is that right? Okay.
Yes, sir.
That's roughly ten percent of three billion dollars right there. And, um, the, the line item that vehicle property taxpayers pay that helps to fund, uh, the baseline county transportation program, if you will, how much does that generate per year, Ms. Thomas?
Estimated six-point-five to seven-point-five a year. Closer to six-point-five.
I wonder if this might be a better question for Mr. Wright, but would there be a way for us to potentially, uh, suspend that tax during the life of the next penny tax? Could we put that, could we possibly put that in the referendum? Or how might we go about marrying those two things if we wanted to?
I'm not sure about suspending the tax. Uh, that's something we'd, we'd have to kind of look into to see about the potential repercussions of that.
Oh, I didn't, uh, prepare you for that question, so I'm happy to talk to you later about it.
Okay.
Thanks.
Madam Chair? If I may respond to that question, please?
Oh, sure. Go ahead.
Uh, just to remind everyone that the reason we do have the roads and drainage fee is because it takes care of more maintenance items that you cannot do with the penny. So, we can't, we, it, you're limited with what you can do with the roads and drainage fees, and you're limited to the projects that you can do with the transportation penny. I'm happy to, to yield to Director Maloney on that, but what we have to remember, if you, if, if one were to cease, some portion of the work that we do would cease as well.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Would it be okay to hear from Director Maloney on that? I'd, I'd be interested.
Let, let me just say this right now, uh, because I know we have a set time, we have several more committee meetings to go, so I don't want to go too far off on a tangent. I do, you want to make sure we're sticking with the penny conversation and what this work session is for. And so if we could, can we have maybe that happen offline and then come back to us with a report? Because I don't know how long Director Maloney's going to take and how far this is going to go. And we have a whole, that's no, that is no disrespect to you, Director Maloney, you were very thorough in all your responses, and I appreciate all the details you provide to me. Thank you. But there is a good bit of section still left in this work session that we need to address related to our roadmap.
No problem.
Okay. Thank you. Councilwoman Newton?
Uh, yes, thank you. You asked what additional information we need, so in addition to, um, any information that Tryon wants to send, I know that I have it probably five times. If we can make it six, if you could resend the assessment list to me, um, that, the, the needs assessment, that would help because to our point that we're not going to be able to do everything on the list, I'm also concerned that everything we need is not even on the list, and so I need to take all that into account.
And Ms. Newton, I'll say too, the next section that we get to, as Ray addresses, uh, priorities and, that's going to address a lot of what you're talking about, of things that aren't even on the list, and how we need to plan for that in these categories.
Works for me.
Further questions related to number of years, collections, the breakdown percentage of forty, forty, twenty for the three categories? Yes, ma'am, Ms. Newton?
I guess, one thing, if I understand correctly, something that you said, Mr. Jones, one second. The, the costs that we're looking at, looking at here with the projections out don't include the penny, I'm sorry, don't include the comment. That, is that correct?
Correct.
The, the things in here? So then I guess, for me, with whatever projections...
Hold on, I'm sorry. Can you clarify that? Because if, on one page, it does break out the comment and collections, but what are you saying? It doesn't include the comment?
So...
On the, under project cost, that slide that's up right now?
Oh, okay.
Those are just the transportation needs. That's right. The previous one does show revenues broken down by all three.
I'm reviewing to make sure I already, because...
Go back a slide a little bit, please?
Yeah. So then looking at twelve...
This one has a breakdown of collections if you had the comment. Is that what you mean? Or you mean the reverse?
Yes. Okay. No, no. I think what I need is, unless it is in here, is twelve and thirteen together, which is to say that our projects projected, the comments projects projected with the same inflation rates projected, because the total number that we have is going to have to include all of them. So, is, is that in here somewhere? Am I missing it?
We don't have the comment number.
We don't have the comment. They did not provide it, and so we still have to stick to our schedule.
Even, uh, and, and if this is a waste of time, that's fine, and I can take it offline, but just some sort of, like, a placeholder number of what it was? No, okay. All righty.
But, uh, Councilwoman Teratio Chair say that they are meeting on the twenty-fourth, and hopefully they'll get back to us very soon. But yes, we do not have that number to include.
Well, if they send it...
Yes.
Can we have that slide where we, we have that marriage together?
So Jones says yes.
And you can even have it in a more clear font, because it, it was sent to me beautifully, I printed it incorrectly. I'm sorry, it's blurry, but I don't, Ms., Ms., uh, we can't let Lori take the bullet for that. So, sorry about that.
All right, we're ready to, to move on to priorities? All right. Thank you.
Very good. Um, if I could just set this up and let folks exhale for just a minute, um, we have, uh, we've had a theme that we've talked about almost the entirety of the penny, and that is to give not only the council but also administration and the Transportation Department the tools that they'll need and that you'll need to manage the penny, um, through what will ultimately be times of change. The transportation needs assessment is not going to be fixed. It's literally going to change every day. There's things going on in our county every day that require somebody to address them. And so what we wanted to do is come up with a way to give you a program that has sufficient flexibility in it to allow you all and, and, and the future councils to then react. And so that is really the purpose of this whole concept of principles. If you could go to the next slide, please. One thing I want to, um, really stress, e- even though we've asked for advice and input from the Transportation Penny Advisory Committee, um, and we're certainly talking with the Transportation Ad-Hoc Committee, the principles ultimately to be applied within this program are county councils' principles. Their, their county council established guidelines to allow flexibility in how and when the needs will be addressed and turned into projects and paid for with a transportation penny. So I just want to make that infinitely clear, which is one of the reasons when we get to the roadmap, uh, we'll go back through it one more time, but you will see there, and you'll see in just a minute, that the principles document is something that county council will adopt as its own, um, and to enable it not only to deal with what we need in the ordinance, but also to manage the program going forward after a successful referendum. So these are your principles. Uh, if we can go to the next slide. I, I also, I think it's, come back one slide? There we go. I think it's important to appreciate that principles have dual purposes. So, we're, we're talking about the things we need in the ordinance, and we've had a lot of conversation about that today, and I appreciate you all being attentive to the fact that the ordinance is intentionally, um, has some blanks in it, uh, and those are intended to be conversation starters, and they have been. So this has been a very good dialogue today. But between here and the time that council approves the ordinance, if it chooses to do so, then the purpose of the principles is going to help take needs and turn them into actual projects, actionable projects, to put those projects into the categories we've been discussing, to help determine how much of the penny will go to each of the categories. And also, we do want to, and I'm, I'm going to use these words carefully, Mr. Walker, given your question at the ad hoc committee, we want to give the citizens a flavor for the types of projects that live within each of the project categories. So for instance, when somebody says, tell me what a county advancement project is, we want to get to the point where after this council has been able to apply principles to that needs list, you can say, well, the following large countywide projects are things that we'd like to see addressed with the penny, and they're listed here as examples of county advancement projects. Same thing for community investment projects. What are we talking about? You know, for instance, are we talking about a program to resurface secondary roads in the county, particularly those that are traveled by, you know, a high number of cars every day? That could be the kinds of things that would be addressed with a community investment project. And with comment enhancement projects, once we sort of understand what they look like, we also want to be able to distill a little bit about the kinds of things that are being done. In particular, if there are new routes being established that are truly meeting needs of our citizens, you know, new routes in the Northeast, new routes in Little Richland, we want to be able to tell people that's what we're talking about, in addition to the general operations of the comment. So that distillation, trying to give just a summary of the major elements of the projects, that's what we envision will be in the ordinance, okay? Now, what happens when this program comes alive, right? What happens when, after all the good, hard work of folks sitting here, we have a successful referendum? Well, then we have a program to manage. Then it'll be a question of, how does administration and the Transportation Department actually then start to address the list? You know, we've been very careful to not put you all in a position where you have to prioritize projects today when we're not sure exactly what the needs will be tomorrow. And so, rather than having you do that, we're asking you to adopt principles to allow staff to be able to do that, but then also to adopt principles that require regular reporting back to this council, and to enable a dialogue. In particular, if there are projects that are not being addressed in a, in a district for a particular reason, to ensure that that dialogue is happening. And also extremely importantly, if in your district, there's an emerging need, something that has not yet appeared on a needs list, but it's an emerging need because of wear and tear, because of a new business, because of a new school, because of a new commercial opportunity, if any of those things should come to pass, we want to make sure that we have money set aside to address emerging needs, and just as importantly, for there to be a way for council to express its desire for emerging needs to be met. So these principles, which we envision will be a document that this council approves by resolution, they will have a life after the ordinance is adopted and after the penny is approved, and it will be critical in discussing it with staff and even to talking today with Director Maloney. I think it's, I think it's music to their ears that they'll have guidelines and a roadmap for how to approach these projects and have the ability... for how to approach these projects and have the ability, if they have to, to use the principles to make value judgments about projects, knowing that there'll be regular reporting to the council about what's getting done. And just as important as we found out in the last six months, what's not getting done? So that is the purpose of the principles. I gave you the long view and the short view. Now let's talk a little bit about what kind of principles we're talking about. If we can go to the next slide. So one of the things that's happened, and I think it was a great deal of wisdom on the part of council to get some other people looking at this and get some other folks working on it. And so in particular, the Transportation Penny Advisory Committee has begun to develop a list of principles. Again, these are your principles. So if you see something here that you don't like, if you see something here you think's incomplete, it's not a final list, not even close. But here are some examples of things that have been talked about. First, do we have projects on the needs list for which there is significant federal or state matching dollars that we need to move forward on quickly so as, so as not to lose those matching dollars? If so, that might be a reason to prioritize some projects. Or there might be a reason, or there might be a principle that we apply to those projects. Do we have projects that were unfunded from the prior penny? If so, that would be a principle that we look at in terms of how we deal with approaching those projects. The number of residents affected, the cost of a project versus the number of residents affected, the public safety impact of a project. Does a project, if done, address blight in different areas of the county? So are there areas of the county that can't develop or won't develop because blight needs to be addressed or we need to have better access to those areas? Would that be covered? Are we regularly reviewing the needs? One of the principles that's been discussed is, let's do this more frequently than every 10 years. Let's look at that needs list. Let's make sure that it's dynamic. Let's make sure that the, the interests and the needs of the folks that live in the districts you all represent are regularly rising to the top. Let's make sure we've got a program that can, that can deal with that. And you all are well aware, the county's in the middle of a strategic planning process too. Let's make sure that a penny aligns with your strategic plan. All of that should be in alignment. If we have emerging needs, let's make sure the pennies are designed to, or the penny can be designed to address them. We can look at impact on economic development generally. We could look at impact on certain kinds of commercial growth as principles to be applied when looking at penny projects. Finally, we can also look at impact on underserved communities. To what extent has a community not received investments under the penny program? Or are there other markers of economic disadvantage that, that could be helped if we could improve the transportation infrastructure in a particular community? And finally, what portion of each of the categories of projects should be undesignedated or should be set aside for emerging needs? This is the current list. And I was talking to Chairman Black before he left earlier. They're hard at it. They're working on other ideas for principles to be considered by this council. And so you have a functioning, active Transportation Penny Advisory Committee and you have a functioning, active Transportation Ad Hoc Committee. And both are feeding input into the development of these principles. Let me just pause there, Madam Chair, and see whether anyone has comments.
Councilwoman Weaver?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did have one more question, back to the, the issue of years again. So this may be a question for Attorney Wright. So let's say we go ahead with the 15-year plan. It's approved by voters. Does that lock council into ever changing that? In other words, could a future council come back and say, hey, you know, now we decided we want to build a courthouse. We were just kidding, we want to make it 10 years. Could they do that? Or is it locked into 15 years?
I think with the ordinance, it's illegal, but.
It's locked in.
Yeah.
It's locked in.
It's locked in 15 years.
Because it's a referendum. So whatever's in that, whatever you have in that referendum, that's it.
Okay. That's, that was my question.
We can't do a courthouse because it's a transportation.
No, I know that. But I'm saying if a future council wanted to then say, hey, we decide we're only going to do 10 years. Now we want to reboot to something else. But they can't do that. It's locked in for 15 years. Okay.
Or, or if we collect the amount, whichever comes first.
Okay, that's true.
So if we, if things are great and we have a lot of growth, we could collect that dollar amount in 10 years.
Okay.
Right?
That's true.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, I do know in our previous Transportation Ad Hoc Committee, we did review some of these principles and had some discussions around them. But I know there may be a few folks that were not in that meeting. And so if there's any additional thoughts you have on principles or things you want to add, Mr. Jones is happy to incorporate those as well. But we'll continue to get feedback from T-PAC as well. Councilwoman Newton, yes?
Thank you. As I was looking at this, and again, I know that we're developing and then we'll eventually come back and approve a final list. But I just did have a few thoughts and also questions. So one is, in the first column, five, we look at public safety impacts. And a question that I would have for the consideration of the body is, do we want to prioritize safety impacts around schools differently? So as we, for example, look at some of our current Transportation Penny schema, we do take a look at schools and things that affect children. And so that would be something that I would want us to consider. Again, public safety is a broad category, but adding that there. And then one of the, the categories that we have is the impact on commercial growth. And it's interesting the way it's worded. It's like our transportation's impact on commercial growth, but there's also commercial growth's impact on us. And I'm, I'm more concerned about that in, in many ways. And so specifically, as we look at different areas of the county that are having an increase in residential housing, which might be just about, well, I was going to say it might be just about everybody, but we know who we are. That is something that is really dynamic and, and impacts of that are going to be making themselves felt probably around the time that the collection of this penny happens, should, should the penny pass. And so I care about our impact on it, but just want to make sure we're taking into account its impact on us. And again, specifically, among other categories, residential development and how we as a county are going to be supporting the sometimes dramatic impact that that's going to have. So if, if that's not here, I'd like to include it. And if you think it's here, then I would love for it to be clearer than it is. And then the final thing that I have for now, and I'll keep thinking about this. I'm not really sure how to word it or where it's included in here. But we look at the number of residents affected and I think that that's an important category. I also think we need to consider that certain roads and thoroughfares are critical to certain communities, no matter how many people are there. And so to give you an example, if you look at my district, Garner's Ferry Road is one of two major outlets. If Garner's Ferry doesn't work, it, nothing works. And so I don't know what my population, the population is that's driving up and down Garner's Ferry Road as compared to pick some busy road in the Northeast on a given day. But at the same time, our community infrastructure doesn't work at all unless that road is taken care of. So what I wrote down, just to spitball initially, was major arteries with limited access. That's not the clearest or sexiest term. But just trying to get to that idea where there's, there's population and just numbers, but then there's importance to a community. And so I want to make sure that that's included as well as a priority. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any additional thoughts or feedback? And thank you, Ms. Newton. I think that was all very helpful as we look to our priorities list and what we want to consider. All right, Mr. Jones?
I just want to highlight kind of where we're going on the next slide. There's a, there's a document that, that's starting to live. It lives in draft form. It's called the Richland County 2024 Penny Projects Principles and Categories. It lives in draft form because it's currently being kind of worked through by the T-PAC. And ultimately, it'll then work its way through Transportation Ad Hoc. And it'll find its way to the county council sometime around the June work session, which is scheduled right now for June 25th. But it is anticipated that within that document, these, the principles that we've been talking about would be enumerated. The principles themselves would be prioritized in some way or given some weight so that we, that folks can make them actionable. And so that is really an important element of this and that that document, with whatever input from council may come, would ultimately be adopted by council on, on July 16th by resolution. And a distillation of the major projects that are talked about in that document would also find its way into the ordinance, a much shorter version of what's happening in each of those project, project categories. So that's just a preview of what's to come. But there will be a document for you to review once the committees have finished their work. If we can now just go.
Mr. Jones, I just want to, if you could dive just a little bit deeper and just making sure folks are clear. Because we have the ordinance that we are going through, but then we have a separate resolution that we are going through. And so I know those are two separate things that are not dependent upon one another. So our resolution is our typical resolution. It does not need to go to a ballot per se, like the referendum. Could you just?
Yes.
Explain the two and the difference?
Sure, sure thing. So the ordinance specifically calls for the penny referendum. And so that's the major thing that it does. And it asks the Election Commission to hold the referendum. It provides them with the ballot questions. And there's some blanks in those ballot questions and we've talked about those a fair amount tonight. But it also sort of tells the story of why we're approaching these needs with a suggested penny. So a lot of background in there. The ordinance itself won't attach or, or recite everything that's in this project and principles document. The ordinance may refer to it here or there, but the, but the ordinance has a very specific purpose. And the very specific purpose is to meet the statutory requirements to put a penny on the ballot. The resolution that's being adopted is being adopted for two reasons. One, it's to give you all, as the folks that are in the community, talking to potential voters, educating those potential voters. And when they say, on what basis are we going to make decisions? I want you to have a document. I want you to have something that you've already seen, that you've, that you've sweated through with us and thought through it with us. And you can say, this is exactly how we're going to make decisions. And if somebody says, is safety important? You say, yes, it is. It's right here. Somebody says, what about safety around schools? Yep, it's right here. And if they say, well, how are we going to handle the next penny? You say, it's right here. And if we, and you'll note in this document, and I, I pray that this ends up in the document, if it's, if it's your pleasure to do so, that there would be portions of the document that says, hey, we're going to look at this regularly. This isn't a one-time thing for us. We know that when we do a penny, it's a dynamic thing. And so we need to be dynamic in the way we manage it. And so we want it to be something that gives you all answers. We want the ordinance to be legally compliant with what the state requires for a penny ordinance. But we also want it to have enough information in it so that everybody can say, oh, this is all consistent. Okay, I've been to the work session and yeah, they talked about that and here it is. Oh yeah, and they, they've adopted this projects and principles document and some of the concepts there are in this ordinance too. We want it all to work together so that you can be proud of it and so you can talk about it and feel good about it and feel like it's been given the airtime that it deserves. So, because we know, once the ordinance passes between July 16th and November 5th, you all will be the ones getting the questions. And so with your great patience, as we go through the roadmap together, we're hopeful that this will also equip you to answer those questions.
Yes, you recognize, Councilwoman Barrett?
So, and I, I told you this already, but I want to say it on the record to say that I think having a resolution is very wise of us and it's also very helpful. Because, you know, you don't have to do a song and a dance trying to figure it out. It, it is information that's already taken care, taken care of through a resolution. It's information that also we can have a document to point back to our constituents. Whether we're present or not, we can all, we can say to them, hey, go to the county's website. You can see exactly what our priorities are. And because I have great faith in this council, I know that everything that we're doing right now is connected to our strategic plan. And, you know, it's really, to me, should, should we move forward with, with a penny? I, I'm glad that we would, or I hope that we would move forward with a resolution to go along with it. So thank you.
Councilwoman Newton?
Thank you. The last thing, I apologize. I did forget one thing that I was thinking about for principles, which we don't have time to flesh out today. But one thing that I think is important for, for transparency and accountability with this penny is that I think there are also some, what I'm calling administrative principles, that we also need to outline. So we've talked about, for example, the idea that this is going to be a dynamic list and things are going to be added. Well, how are they going to be added? How are we going to be, you know, addressing plans? This, this is, this example's too in the weeds, but it was on my list from our meeting before. How are we going to handle inflation? How are we going to handle, we're talking about right now, how are we going to do priorities of these projects? And even things like, and this may not need to go into principle, but there are things that I feel like we need to sort out that go hand in hand with the ordinance. For example, really in the weeds, but right now, for our penny contracts, we're looking at the lowest, the lowest bidder. Do we want to look at quality maybe? Do we want to do some, some sort of combination? Again, I know we can't flesh this out right now, but there's the ordinance that we write. But there are also some in the weeds, nuts and bolts administration of the penny that I think our constituents have a right to have questions about and that we certainly, and staff, I'm sure, want to assess and say, hey, we've been learning about the penny as we've gone through these, this process. There are some things that we, you know, might want to change. But things like our procurement process, and if, if that makes sense, are things that, you know, I would love to make sure get handled at the outset. So, so again, for me, I wrote down administrative principles. I don't know where we get to that or how we get to that, but I do think they're important.
I do envision that this document we're talking about will incorporate administrative principles too. And you'll see those.
Thank you.
Okay, we're almost done. We can flip a page or two. You all have been wonderful with your time. I just wanted to remind you, yeah, there we go. I wanted to remind you just about the thought process that you all have employed as you've made some, some decisions about these categories. So this is a snip from your ordinance as it exists right now. It recites the three types of projects. And I thought it would be just useful, Madam Chair, just to remind everybody, how do we define this? So what is a community investment project? It's a project that targets the integrity, safety, reliability, and sustainability of the transportation infrastructure in local communities that impact the day-to-day activities of citizens and local businesses. These projects will include road improvements, widening, resurfacing, paving of dirt roads, intersection improvements, bikeways, green belts, sidewalks, and other pedestrian-friendly enhancements. Things that our folks are dealing with every day or in their communities. County advancement projects. These projects target the expansion of transportation infrastructure to achieve, support, and sustain economic growth on a county-wide basis. These projects include new construction, improvements, and widening for major roadways, intersections, and commuting corridors. And finally, the comment enhancement projects. These projects target the operation and expansion of the comment. These projects include operational sustainability, establishment of new routes, new construction and improvements to enhance rider safety and comfort, and acquisition of new buses and other modes of transportation. So when someone says to you, what is a community investment project? We just want you to know, it's right there. It's in the ordinance. And, and we'll flesh it out even a little more as we go forward. And as you see there, I've got a little highlighted bit right at the bottom that just amplifies the fact that we are going to have some examples of the major projects within each category in the, in the ordinance itself. Not a long list, not a long recitation. We've, we've always said that won't be in the ordinance. The long list will, will, will be available separately, but it will not be in this ordinance. Okay, next page. And for me, Madam Chair, this would be my last slide. I just want to remind council that we've got a number of things coming up. We are, next will be the May 6th and May 7th meetings that are scheduled for the Transportation Ad Hoc, sorry, Transportation Penny Advisory Committee and then the Transportation Ad Hoc. Those would be the last two public meetings that would occur in advance of council's scheduled second reading of the ordinance. And it would be at that meeting where we'd be filling in blanks and doing some of the things we've talked about tonight. Then there is a fairly long and very intentional period of time between May 14th, second reading, and July 16th, third reading. I point out that that is a very unusually long, two-month duration between second and third. Why are we doing that? Because we know that the more this is on the public agenda, the more the public and our, and our folks and constituents will be paying attention to the penny. We want to give them time to share thoughts with you. And so after May 14th, we'll have another T-PAC meeting, another ad hoc meeting. We'll have another T-PAC meeting in June. We'll have another T-PAC meeting in June, and yet another T-PAC meeting on June 17th for it to finalize its recommendations. They'll go to Ad Hoc. Ad Hoc will have an opportunity to pass them along, make changes. We'll have another work session on June 25th. And June 25th, we'll attempt to distill all the work that's been done over these next six or so weeks. There'll be a public hearing with no reading of an ordinance, again, a very unusual thing, on July 9th. And the thought is to let the public come, let them talk, without the pressure of a reading to make sure that they're heard. And finally, if, if all goes well, we're looking to do a third reading of the ordinance on July 16th, along with the approval of the resolution we talked about earlier. And so what happens if we're not ready on July 16th? Well, our real deadline is August 15th. So we've built in some time, if we need it, to deal with any final questions or things that may come up. We recognize that August is a time when council tries to exhale. And we want to give you that exhale. And so we definitely, we definitely want to get things done by the 16th. But we were asked to build in some cushion, and we did.